I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 6, 2020 Papillion City Council meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Yeah.
Mumgarth.
Yeah.
Gaines.
Yeah.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Klug.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yeah.
Ingberg.
They don't know we're gonna do it, but we've got some scouts in the back of the room. I want to invite them up in front of the podium, and you guys can lead the pledge for us. You mind doing that? Just go ahead and come up here. If you want to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Councilwoman Kluge has a presentation.
Many of you don't know, but Mayor Black has served as the chairman for the Wagon Wheel District of Boy Scouts of America and has just recently turned that position over to our next chairman. Daniel Kirby is our executive director for our area, and he's not able to be here tonight, so these two young gentlemen have agreed to step in and want to say a few words to you.
It's been an honor working with Mayor Black over the past three years. He has strengthened relationships that will cause scouting to grow and continue in gas and tar breed countries for years to come. Thank you for your leadership and humility. It's been a pleasure working with you, Daniel Gilby, Wagon Wheel Senior District Executive.
Thank you.
Very good. And then they have the plaque.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. You need to step over here, because they want a picture. Just a second, you guys.
I can't hear. Okay, I was saying, I need to...
No, 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 get down. Sure. Okay. One, two.
Thank you.
Okay, don't go too far, please, sir. You guys did good. Thank you. Also, as a city council, we wanted to recognize you, so we have a proclamation for you. Whereas Mayor Black is extraordinary supporter of the Boy Scouts of America in the Wagon Wheel District, serving as our district chairman for three years, leading over 75 packs, troops, crews, and teams. And whereas through Mayor Black's leadership, the Wagon Wheel District has received the Journey of Excellence Award, which encourages excellence and continuous improvement in providing a quality program at all levels of the BSA. And whereas Mayor Black is the model for youth in upholding the Scout Law, which states a scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And whereas the city council wishes to convey its appreciation to Mayor Black for his leadership in the BSA and continued support of all members of the community involved in the organization. Therefore, we, the city council of the City of Papillion, do hereby honor Mayor David P. Black and have set our hands unto this official seal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You get that. Along with being a great example, the mayor has also helped our organization through opening doors that before may have been shut to us. He helped us with computer problems and helped council and nationals see where some of our issues were. And he made sure that people just simply understood that it was an organization for both the youth, girls, and boys, and helped us implement that part of the program. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Powers, administrator's report, please.
Thank you. On the consent agenda tonight is a resolution to set a hearing date and time for the council to sit as the Board of Equalization, and that will be October 20 at 6:45 p.m., which is 15 minutes prior to the next council meeting. So, please plan to be here early next meeting for that. You'll convene as the Board of Equalization, not the city council, and adjourn prior to the regular council meeting. It has been several years since the city has done this. However, we're looking at having Board of Equalization meetings on a more regular basis. There will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on October 26 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at The Landing to review the final draft of the city's comprehensive plan and to provide feedback and comments to HDR, which is the city's consulting firm doing the plan. And then additionally, Kendra is scheduling the missing metal discussion with Dan Paralek, and it'll be a weekday evening towards the end of this month. And it will be beneficial if all council members would be able to attend, and the Planning Commission will also be invited. It'll be for an hour and a half, and it will occur via Zoom, and each of you will attend on your own devices. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilwoman Kluge. Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Oh, Mr. Stube, you want to remove item C-10, is that right? Okay. Item C-10 is pulled. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Item C-10, Resolution R-20-0179, Resolution to Approve Easement Acquisitions for the Turkey Road to Summit Ridge Water Transmission Main Project. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-20-0179?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank city staff and the property owner for coming to agreement on this. I believe that when this originally came in front of us, that if we were not able to acquire the easement, there was a potential of almost $1 million of additional cost to the rate payer. So, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize staff and absolutely the property owner for agreeing to this easement.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote. Mr. Glover.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 1888, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 170 of the Papillion Municipal Code Having to Do a Subdivision of Land in Its Entirety and to Provide for an Effective Date. The applicant is the City of Papillion. It's a subdivision regulations amendment. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Kluge. Her hand was up before the voice. Item D-2, Ordinance 1900, An Ordinance to Amend the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item F-1, Resolution... I shouldn't skip one. Resolution R-20-0109, A Request for Approval of a Special Use Permit to Authorize the Construction of a Principal Structure Within the Downtown Overlay District Pursuant to Section 205-118A1 and Parking Facility Pursuant to 205-118A6, To Add an Additional Dwelling Unit with a Garage and Associated Parking to Expand the Multi-Family Residential Use Established on the Property, Legally Described as the North Two-thirds of Lot 7 and All of Lot 8, Block 12 Papillion, Generally Located at 243 North Jefferson. The applicant is Mark Jaxick. This is continued from the September 15 city council meeting. At the September 15 one, we did have a motion to approve by Councilman Gaines, a second by Councilman Sunday, so the motion is on the floor. So, we're at council discussion and then a vote. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, so the motion to approve, that was to approve the original submittal. There has been some changes in the conditions. Does that motion still apply to the document that is before us today?
I'll look to legal or planning for a response. And I think they're all looking at the clerk. Mr. Sturzma, what's your opinion?
So, we have revised the staff report and the resolution based on some discussion that we've had jointly with the applicant. So, what we have on the agenda tonight is what we have an agreement with the applicant on. That said, I think it would be good to clarify on some level what is actually being approved.
So, since it is in the staff report, then there's a public record that was published with the agenda, maybe it is appropriate to do a motion to amend consistent with the staff report. Would that be appropriate?
Okay, then I would make a motion to amend the application consistent with the staff report, including the contingencies for approval.
Is that clear enough for you, Mr. Sturzma? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents on the motion to amend? Any... Yes, sir. And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Mark Jaxick. First, I want to say thank you for... to the council for what you guys have gone through. This has been quite a process. I just want to note that I met with a couple of councilmen, and I was given some things that basically I think I need to have signed and notarized to let you guys know that I will not have certain things down there. Dump trucks, things coming in and out of there throughout the day. It's a guarantee of mine. I will sign anything that states that I will not have anything bigger than a pickup truck down there, and there will be nothing outside, no, nothing that'll make the property look bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I'm gonna... First off, I'm gonna thank Mr. Jaxick for all the time that he has spent and his willingness to cooperate. He sat down with Mark and Jim Glover and myself, and we were very blunt with him that we didn't want to leave the door open for future use that would involve any kind of commercial, industrial rentals, or anything like that. And that we could see that he wanted and needed in some way a garage that would accommodate some very common stuff, such as the mower and stuff like that. So, what we've done is we quit looking at so much the appearance. We've made some changes in the appearance, but we quit looking so much at the appearance and went to control the use, and both now and in the future. And so, this approval has these contingencies on it, and you find those on, you know, on the recommendations in the staff report, that in general, it can only be used for personal vehicles like commercial recreational vehicles or household items. It can be used by the tenants. He cannot rent it out for anybody other than somebody who's living there on the property. Our goal was, this is not going to be, now or in the future, a storage building for commercial, industrial, any of that kind of stuff that's gonna disrupt the neighborhood. It's gonna be a garage that's used to store stuff that's used on the property, used by the tenants or for the tenants. Mr. Jaxick has been very cooperative in agreeing to that. We've also had some discussions about, let's look in the future, and, you know, if that building doesn't, isn't economical to the current building, the historic building, isn't economical to continue to use as it is now, again, that missing metal, duplexes, triplexes. We showed him some pictures, and hopefully, that's what I see as the future, but we don't have any control over that. So, I'm going to vote to approve this with those conditions. Mr. Jaxick has said he will agree. He'll live by them. Anybody who sells that property to in the future has to live by them.
Yep.
And I think that's the best we can do today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Because of your willingness to work with the council and make some adjustments, I'm gonna support it because of that and the fact that even if we were for the rest of the council, if we voted against it tonight, this gentleman could still go ahead and build the garage, whether we approve it or not tonight, except for the apartment part.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to, but... So, given that fact that he could build it if we deny it tonight, and he's now willing to make some changes that we wanted, I'm gonna support it.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I also plan on supporting this. I obviously want to thank the property owner for agreeing to meet and come to some concessions, and want to thank those two gentlemen over there for taking that initiative.
Yes.
One of the questions I have, and it's based on a comment that Mr. Mumgarth made relative to the contingencies are now and into the future, so do the contingencies go with the property?
So, the way that it's written, it's tied to the land. So, usually, if we're gonna make it cease, you know, the approval ceases with the change in use or with a transfer of ownership, then that's specified in the resolution. That's not in this resolution. So, I'm gonna agree that it runs with the land.
Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion is amended. Do we have any proponents on the motion as amended? And we'll carry your comments forward. Do we have any opponents? Any more council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item F-2, Ordinance 1894, An Ordinance to Approve a Change of Zone from R-4 Multi-Family Residential to R-4 PUD-2 Multi-Family Residential with a Specific Plan Unit Development Overlay for the property legally described as lots 48 to 57, lots 62 to 69, lots 74 to 89, and lots 122 to 125 Ashbury Hills, a subdivision generally located northwest of 120th and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashbury Hills Development LLC, Ashbury Hills Replat 1. This was tabled from the September 15 meeting, and this, we have several related items, and so comments from here will carry over. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1894? Motion by Mr... Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I'm gonna turn to the planning director for some clarification here, because I don't have any problem with rezoning as it's, as the ordinance requests. I do have some questions and discussion about the pool, the swimming pool and private swimming pool that'll be there, and the multifamily package. It's my understanding that we can, I can vote for the zoning change, and that in and of itself won't approve those two things. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that on tonight's agenda and these next four items are just associated with the replat and the proposed villas, which are the, basically, single-family homes that have a homeowners' association that do the exterior maintenance. And with that is the changes zone from R-4 to R-4 PUD, which is requesting a side yard setback adjustment in exchange for a neighborhood pool and clubhouse, similar to some other projects that we've done where it was in exchange for a park or a green space specific to the PUD. In this case, they're requesting a pool and a clubhouse.
Okay, see if I understand this, though. The approval for the swimming pool and the approval for the villas, that comes in item F-5, the PUD. If we approve everything else, we still haven't yet approved those two items, correct?
So, the F-2, which is the changes zone, is to change the zone from the current R-4 to the R-4 PUD. And then when you get down to item F-4, that's the PUD... No, that's a subdivision agreement. The F-5 is the PUD agreement, and that has the terms of the PUD.
Okay, so I don't mind that there's gonna be a PUD, but I want to talk about the terms of the PUD. I wait till item 5, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Related item F-3, Resolution R-20-0160, A Resolution to Approve a Final Plat for the property legally described as a replating of lots 48 to 57, lots 62 to 69, lots 74 to 89, and lots 122 to 125 Ashbury Hills, a subdivision generally located northwest of 120th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashbury Hills Development LLC, Ashbury Hills Replat 1. This was also tabled from September 15. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-20-0160? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents? I'll note for the record that the applicants here are their representatives. Did you want to say anything? Okay. Okay. So, I will note for the record that they're all here. Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Item F-4, Resolution R-20-0161, A Resolution to Approve a First Amendment to the Ashbury Hills Subdivision Agreement, also tabled from September 15. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-20-0161? Motion by Councilwoman Kluge? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nes.
Motion passes. Item F-5, Resolution R-20-0162, A Resolution to Approve the Ashbury Hills Replat 1 Planned Unit Development Agreement, again, tabled from September 15. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-20-0162? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents?
Is it on? Okay. Jason Thiel, ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100. With me is Larry Jobin, who's here on behalf of the applicant, as well as Gene Graves, who is a developer for the project. I don't know how much more that you would like us to get into, and prepared to add some additional information from the continuation, but certainly do not want to take up more of the council's time and less necessary. And we're certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
I'll probably carry it over to...
Take some guidance from you all.
I'll probably carry it to council discussion then.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I've got two things I want to clarify and get some interest in. One is the provision, as I understand it, that there will be a lot that'll have a swimming pool and private clubhouse on it. That will be, as I understand it, that will be owned initially by the SID and then, well, owned by the developer, who is in charge and owns the rest of the SID, so it's essentially the same thing. Well, hold on here. And clarify, but I'm really not so interested in that. I'm looking at, eventually, it will be owned by the homeowners' association after the area's all built up. What I'm looking at is, well, what's the impact, then, of this private swimming pool that's owned by the homeowners' association when we come to the point of wanting to annex this area? And when we then do the financial evaluation of the pluses and minuses, how does that swimming pool, that privately operated swimming pool, fit in to that annexation question?
Mr. Sturzma.
I will do my best, and then Larry can, Jobin can correct me. The intent is that it's privately constructed and owned. There is a provision where it gets, the ownership gets transferred to the homeowners' association, and the homeowners' association is responsible for, forever, for the maintenance and operation of that facility. So, my understanding is that it would not be a financial liability that would affect the city's ability to annex that subdivision.
Okay, but my concern is homeowners' associations come and go. Some are very successful, some disappear. And so, if we're looking 20 years down the road, and it's, you know, it's time that we need to annex this area because the city's growing in that direction, if that homeowners' association disappears, absolves, or just isn't very active, and it doesn't want to then take over, continue to operate that swimming pool, is that gonna be an albatross around our head, our neck, and that we can't, you know, annexing that area with that negative, with that swimming pool in there that nobody's gonna take care of? What does that mean to the future?
Mr... Let me guide it real quick. Mr. Sturzma, what is the scenario if we do an annexation? I'll take it one step. We've done the annexation, and then the HOA becomes dysfunctional or dissolves or something. What's the city's rights at that point?
The city would have some legal rights to request the courts to declare us the custodian of the homeowners' association, and, you know, we could then manage it. We could then sell the assets if that's what was necessary to recoup our costs. There are some tools available to the city to rectify that situation.
If we're the custodian of the HOA, does that give us the right then to levy the HOA fee for the maintenance, so it's not on the taxpayers of the city as a whole?
You know, I might defer to our city attorney for that.
Under the statute, if the homeowners' association is administratively dissolved through the Secretary of State, then we could be, we could be appointed as the custodian. If we are appointed as the custodian, then we are given all of the rights and authority that the homeowners' association would have had. So, we could, we could collect any kind of dues that the homeowners' association normally could have. My reading of the statute is that we would be able to take action to liquidate assets that the homeowners' association would have. We can also levy any, we can, we would have to go to the court and request that the court approve and order that we be compensated or that we be reimbursed for any expenses that we had. But if we were, had expenses related to the maintenance of the pool or the clubhouse or any of the common grounds, that would have been the obligation of the homeowners' association. We can ask that the court order that we be reimbursed for those, and then we can levy those against the particular lots that would be affected by it.
Anything to add, Mr. Jobin, from your perspective?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. What I would say to Mr. Mumgarth and the council and the mayor and staff, some of the nicest neighborhoods in the whole Omaha metropolitan area have these types of amenities, and I'll just name a few. Bell Brook, for example, is a Gene Graves development that he did. Waterford is a Gene Graves development that he did. Bridgeport, which was the street of dreams last year, same thing, Gene Graves development. Gene is involved in this one as well. The Prairies in Atlanta Ha developed in Douglas County has a pool. These are all amenities that people are actually looking for. Another one that's in the process of being constructed is Anchor Point by Warrior Young up on 168th and State. And I can tell you, my own neighborhood, The Ridges, one of the reasons why I bought my lot there is because it had a swimming pool in the backyard, and it has one across the street. And, I mean, to me, that was the biggest amenity I could have built on the golf course. I chose not to build on the golf course, because I'd rather have backed up to the pool. What we've found in all these various developments, including the one I live in, is that it actually makes for a stronger association. Why? Because there's something to preserve and something to protect. Some of these associations don't really have anything. They have maybe some trails, they have maybe a little exercise equipment, or maybe a little gazebo. This is an asset that enhances the value of the entire neighborhood and the development, and it gives the reason for the neighbors to get together, make sure that they pay their assessments, make sure they pay their dues, and make sure that it's adequately maintained. So, we think, and also it provides a place to congregate, it actually builds stronger neighborhoods and gives something to protect. You know, and the thing I would say is your own subdivision agreement requires, for example, on detention basins, permanent detention basins, where the sanitary improvement district can actually purchase them and maintain... district can actually purchase them and maintain them prior to annexation. Upon annexation, our, your subdivision agreement actually requires that the SID convey those over to the association. So, I mean, to me, that's more of a risk than a, an asset like a swimming pool and a clubhouse that really brings the neighborhood and enhances the neighborhood and provides value to everybody that lives in that neighborhood. So, I guess I would look at it as a very positive versus a negative, and because I think you're assuming that the association would fail or breach or not live up to their obligations to maintain. But it shouldn't have, the city shouldn't be liable for anything. And, and I guess if it got to the point where it violated all sorts of building codes and everything else, I suppose you could condemn it, demolish it, and turn it into a basketball court or a green space if, worst-case scenario. So, that's, I guess, what I would say about that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I think the protections are there. Mr. Memgird, when you have an asset that's worth protecting and preserving.
I'll go along with that. And, you know, I don't, I don't have any problem with what you've just described. I just don't want to approve something today that then is a problem for the council in twenty years, because I won't be here to help them bail it out.
Right.
Okay.
And I understand that.
I assure you, all of you. Okay, but, and then one question on the second one. As far as the architectural, what the houses in the PUD look like, I, I don't want to vote, I don't, I have problems with the multi-story ones, but as I understand it, exhibit D here is the ones we're voting on tonight. Is that right?
That's correct. The, the, the PUD is, is the single-family villa-type units that is on the screen right now. There is another part of this development. It's a separate application, a separate vote by the council that will be coming on a, on a future agenda, and that will be for the mixed-use agreement that includes the duplex units and the, the townhome units that we saw on the last, at the last meeting.
Okay, well, as long as we're not approving the townhome units tonight, I'll vote for this. How's that?
All right, because we're not.
Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Thielen?
I, no, just...
Okay. Mr. Sunday.
I just had a question about green space. I don't, I haven't heard any mention of any parks or, or where, where are the kids going to go around here? I, I haven't seen anything from you guys on that, so maybe I'm just missing something, but...
Mr. Sterzma?
Yeah, in, in this development, there is, they, they did a little enhancement of some of the sidewalks for the PUD. The, there is a, an elementary school in this neighborhood that, that functions as a local park, and there are some trails that extend east and west through this development that ties into the green space over in the Ashbury Creek developments. And that's a north-south linear green space that has a, a trail planned through it, and that trail, that's the, the connection that we just got a one-point-nine-million-dollar federal grant to, to help us push underneath Highway three-seventy and tie into all of the, the parks north of Highway three-seventy with, with the new lakes.
Is it asking, I mean, I think most developers, we ask them to enhance our city's parks in some form or fashion and, you know, advance that aspect of our community. That, that should be a given, in my view, and I see that here. So, for that reason, I'm planning to oppose.
And on that note, not specific to this one, but the, the philosophy that you're raising, the comprehensive plan that we're doing a whole rewrite of, some of it's addressed in that, and then the Park Rec Master Plan that we just kicked off that process that the council had input on the other day, some of that is forcing that discussion as well. From a philosophical, how, how much neighborhood park space do we need? How do the subdivisions participate in that? So philosophically, we are going to be addressing that bigger picture. But specific to this development, anything else to add, Mr. Sterzma?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. But we do pay park fees, and, and the park fees go towards the, the general park system of the city of Papillion. So, with this development, we do pay and enhance the overall park system of the city. It's not like we're not doing anything. So, I just wanted you to know that. So, in the subdivision agreement, it requires that we pay the park fees that are set forth in the city of Papillion's ordinances. So, we're not leaving the, the city, you know...
I just, speaking to people here in the community, there's a lot of concern out there about this rapid growth, and we don't seem to be addressing the aspect that I'm raising. So, that's, that's why I'm raising it, so...
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Disappointing information.
I think I disconnected you. Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Disappointing information. I'm gonna support this, but we did, in fact, at the, at the risk of everybody telling me how old I am, we, in fact, did have a similar situation before. Terra Heights had a pool on Hogan Drive that was for the residents of that Terra Heights housing addition. What happened with that one, it's been so long ago, and the person that developed that is deceased, and I couldn't get a real straight answer how that was arranged. But I do know that many years later, when the original developer was tired of, didn't want to put any money into it, they knocked it down, bulldozed it, and sold it as house lots, and there's homes there now. So, this, this isn't new, but to answer Councilman Memgird's question, in that case, before, even after the city annexed Terra Heights, or Terra Heights, even though it's part of the city, the developer himself knocked it down. So, it's a little bit different situation.
Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I'm not a real big fan of this pool either. I would, I would rather see parks too myself, but I probably will support this because it is the single houses. I'm not a fan of these. I'm gonna tell you guys that right now. I spent two days out at one hundred and eighth at Harrison. I was there last week. I was there again today. I just, I, I can't buy into that. I don't think Papillion can buy into that. So, I would, if, if this turns out nice, this is probably the ticket we need to go. I would much rather see this than these. You know, we're gonna have other problems out there too, because one day I was out there, I'd say eighty percent of the garbage cans were sitting outside. We got an ordinance here in Papillion that they can only sit out for twenty-four hours, so we're not gonna change another ordinance just for this. So, I say we keep talking about this, keep working about this, because I, I'm not gonna support this, no way. This, this one here, I will deny, but I would, I would be a lot happier if that pool wasn't there and it was a park, because you got, what, forty-some homes there? Ninety-three? Think of that. How many people are gonna be going to that pool all the time? It's... No, I know, I know. I'm just saying, that could probably create a bigger problem than it will a solution, in, in my mind. But that's fine. Like I said, I'm gonna support this one, so...
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F six, ordinance eighteen ninety-seven, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately zero-point-two-five-five acres of city property to Daniel and Louise Greco. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen ninety-seven? Motion by Councilman Klue. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F seven, ordinance eighteen ninety-eight, an ordinance to amend chapter one seventeen of the Papillion Municipal Code to increase the number of allowed licenses for retail sale of fireworks from ten to twelve, to clarify that the city council can approve special fireworks permits and display fireworks permits, and to make the chapter more concise and consistent. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen ninety-eight? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Mr. Memgird.
Okay, I, I had quite a lot of discussion with the committee chairman, and, and I'm going to vote for this. I brought this up, you know, the last time the applications came in. Going to twelve certainly solves the immediate problem. My next thought is, well, what happens when we come in now and we have like thirteen or fourteen non-pro, applications, including a bunch of new nonprofits? How do we determine what, who gets it and who doesn't? The ordinance says that we're supposed to consider the length of service and the plan for community betterment. I would say, say, okay, we're going to twelve, and maybe we should get through this firework season and see if we have more than twelve. But if we come in with fourteen, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen applications, as which is certainly possible, we're gonna have to have some better criteria, I think, in how we decide who gets it and who doesn't. Otherwise, I mean, what the heck? It could be just simply politics. Who knows? So, I would just suggest that there's, continue to give some thought as to what will happen, how will we make our decisions at that point. But twelve, going to twelve is certainly the next step that needs to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Just, just to follow up a little bit from the committee, committee standpoint, besides cleaning up the language, the two additional permits are for nonprofit, and there, it's a requirement. The reason I think it's important is, I think all of you know, that the bulk of our fireworks permits are nonprofit, and, and those many times are the largest fundraiser they have all year. And they could do it within a ten, ten-day period by putting their effort into it, but they could do without any risk to their, their five-of-one C here. They're, they're a nonprofit, and it's, it's a very big moneymaker. So, Councilman Memgird wanted additional permits last year, because remember, we had eleven, I think, eleven or twelve, and, and we only had one spot available. So, we will continue to look at different ways to handle it if suddenly we end up with a, fifteen applicants, let's say, and twelve spots. And we may find that some of the ones in the top ten that are, have been here a while, some may drop, start dropping out too, because organizations change structure and their interests changes and, and their demographics change. So, but we will continue to look at it between now and next year and see if there's any additional tweaking that we need to do. But that's why we did it, is to help the nonprofits stay involved in Papillion and involved in the community and help them financially.
Mr. Sunday.
How many of the applicants last time were for-profit individuals?
I think, if I remember right, we only have two, maybe three at the most for-profits, and those are old ones. Is it, is it two? We have two for-profits, and that's because they've been grandfathered. No for-profits can come in anymore. They were kind of the original when this policy was put in place. So, no new for-profits can come in.
Mayor, would you say grandfathered?
Hold on one second. Your mic's off. I'm gonna move you. Can you cue?
I know what grandfathered means, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not sure what the terms of that were.
Was it written into the ordinance somehow, or?
It's, it's in the current ordinance.
If it became down to a struggle down the road between too many nonprofits and the remaining for-profits that are grandfathered, the only way to get them out, if the council wanted to, would be to change the ordinance, is that...
And the grandfathering is not specific to for, to the for-profit. The grandfathering is in the current ordinance, any license holder, for-profit or nonprofit. If you, if you held the license the previous year, you basically get an extra point or a trump card.
Okay, but the council still has the power to change that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
If they change the ordinance.
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Ingberg.
Just, just a point of fact, too, for Mr. Sunday's. The reason that was put in place is because previously, we had a lot of difficulty every year with, we had many more for-profits interested. And it was always a little bit of a fight. I don't mean that literally, but it was a real fight every year in determining permits, and it, and it took up way too much of council time. And we went to, I, the mayor's correct, is we grandfathered, but I prefer to say we changed it to base it on a number of years a person or, or an organization had a permit. Part of the reason for that was to get people that invested in the community, and part of it was the fact that the, many times, the quality you know is, is better than the quality you don't know. For example, if we had, I won't say go about, but let's just say some nonprofits or for-profits at the time that had a track record of abiding by the city ordinance by complying with the permit, passing their inspections and so forth, we would give them the incentive to come back the following year. That way, we continue to have a, either an organization or a business at the time to have a track record with the city of compliance. It made it much easier for enforcement, and we haven't had a problem since that we used to have. It was a fight every year, and we changed it for that reason. Now, we have people that are, know our rules, know what we expect, and they, they do what they're supposed to do. And over time, it's switched over from for-profit, now it's almost exclusively nonprofit.
Mr. Memgird.
Yeah, yeah, I'll continue that discussion, because specifically, the ordinance gives first priority to any individual business or entity that's held a license for, continuously for the past five calendar years. Now, when that ordinance was initially passed, oh, a dozen and a half years ago, I voted for it. And, and it was a necessary part of the compromises that were being made at that point, because we wanted to get more control over fireworks, but we didn't want to push people out who had been selling. Everything Mr. Ingberg says about the benefits of that, I don't disagree with. But then I also say that now at this point, I believe that provision, that priority, is giving the license in and of itself a value, whether you do the work or not. If you're one of those continuous five-year people, you can go out and recruit the work, and all that you do is get the license, because it now has a value in and of itself. I'm not sure that's the best system to have. So, I would suggest simply that we, we look at whether we want to phase out that grandfather clause, we want to get rid of it, or if, if it's really serving the purposes that we initially needed it for.
Based on the discussion, I think we will take away an item at the administration level, then over the next year, we kind of think about that tie situation, and that might lead into that discussion as well. Anything else on the motion that's on the floor? Ms. Klue.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee for doing this. I think everybody knows that the rapid growth Papillion is having, and to me, it just makes logical sense that we're gonna have a couple more locations for people to purchase their fireworks while benefiting some of our not-for-profits. So, thank you for the hard work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F eight, resolution R twenty zero one seven-two, a resolution to approve the second amendment to the North Shore Commercial Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty zero one seven-two? Motion by Councilman Klue. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents? The applicant's representative is here. Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Mr. Sunday.
Eighteen zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F nine, ordinance eighteen fifty-three, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R three, Urban Family Residential, for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Two, Township thirteen north, range twelve east, excluding right-of-way. Generally located at the northeast corner of South Eightieth and Cape Art Road, the applicant is Shadow Lake Two LLC, Phase Two. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen fifty-three? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero nays.
Motion passes. F ten, resolution R twenty zero one eight zero, resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the southeast quarter of, southwest quarter of Section Two. quarter of, southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 13 North, Range 12 East, excluding right-of-way, generally located at the northeast corner of South 80th Street and Cape Art Road. The applicant is Shadow Lake 2 LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20-0180? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second, second by Councilman Glover. Do you have any proponents? Yes, sir.
Randy Kouschak with Lampar Nielsen, 14710, West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska. This subdivision is just a second phase to the Shadow Lake 2 subdivision, 51 single-family residential lots, same lot sizes as the previous phase and adjacent development, pretty straightforward 20-acre parcel of land, one of the, the last piece of land pretty much remaining in the Shadow Lake and Shadow Lake 2 section. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Item F11, Resolution R20-0181, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Shadow Lake 2 subdivision agreement. Motion to approve Resolution R20-0181? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman, Councilwoman Clu. Do you have any proponents? Note, the applicant will carry those comments over. Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen, zero, nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. No committees met in the last two weeks. Do we have any comments from the floor? Do we have any council comments? Just the last couple of weeks, again, on a weekly basis, Sarpy-Cass Health Department is still meeting with all of the jurisdictions and the county representatives, along with some federal representatives, so again, if you have any questions related to COVID, that, let us know, and those calls are 9:30 on Thursday mornings, so let us know if you have any questions or concerns there that we need to be addressing. We also had a update call with the United Cities regarding any legislative items. I think the main topic is, now that the legislature's out, legislature uses that down period for interim hearings for research. There are, I think it's the Judicial, Judiciary Committee, Senator Lathrop is the chair, is having some hearings in regards to policing, based on some of the national conversations that are going on, and Chief Lyons and myself will probably be going down next week and testifying in front of the judiciary, educating them on some of the, how, some of the best practices, actually, that Papillion's doing. If you remember, we are CALEA-certified, which is a national, actually, an international accreditation agency, that probably, I'm gonna say 1% of the agencies in the United States are probably CALEA-certified, and we are, and so Chief Lyons has the ability to actually participate in a lot of national-level conversations about best practices of modern policing, and a lot of those are being implemented here. And so, one of the things we've told the legislature is, if you're looking to make any changes, look to Papillion as the example, so we're gonna be going down next week and testifying in relation to that. I think that's probably most of that we talked about. Again, if you have any interest in any legislation, now's the time to be bringing that forward, because we can use this interim period to have the research done and then have it introduced at the beginning of the next biennium, so share any of that that you've got. The Flights of Honor exhibit was at Papillion Landing, that was a great exhibit. I looked at the registry, people were driving in from a long ways. I saw West Point and Grand Island and some of the others were that were in here, so Ms. Hanson, thank you for that. That was a nice exhibit to have. The wastewater agency had its monthly meeting, no councils aware, but more for the public. The, a major change was made at the agency. If people remember, when the agency was first formed, it was gonna do a P3 public-private partnership, go out to bid, and have a private organization build the treatment plant, and with some of the growth that's at 50 and 370, and some of the OPPD pilot fees, which are in lieu of tax, that we're starting to get, we came to an agreement where we'll give some of those fees back to the agency to help jump-start the agency, so we created a funding source that we didn't have before, and then that changed the game a little bit, and then City of Omaha opened the door for us to use them for the treatment and have a regional solution, and so the sewer agency has been negotiating quite a while, and came to an agreement and approved that plan with the City of Omaha, and I think it was two weeks ago, the City of Omaha City Council approved that agreement as well, and so we are now in a formal relationship with the agency and the City of Omaha for treatment. That arrangement that the City of Omaha offered up is saving us tens of millions of dollars, and Mr. Stube, you may have a better idea, but tens of millions of dollars are being saved by going with City of Omaha as opposed to a P3. So, great cooperation. We should now see pipes starting to get in the ground. There's some active work going on right now for right-of-way acquisition, so we can start laying that pipe, so that'll open up the development. So, that was a very monumental meeting that we had. The Mayor's Youth Council has been doing a lot of work. As you know, they've got the '57 Chevy, the Chevy Car Club, the Frickies host. I think it's the oldest Chevy car club this side of the Mississippi River, and I think it was 23 years ago, that car club acquired a '57 Chevy and restored it and donated it to the police department as the Dare Police Car, and they've actually won a national award for that car, so the Mayor's Youth Council raised money and bought a display case, and that's now in the lobby of the police department, so they had a presentation, so it takes time to go down and see that. OPPD, as you know, we've talked a lot about the Power Gas Generation Plant, and they had a public hearing, a virtual one. They call it Power with a Purpose Community Meeting. I did attend that, and then Sarpy County Economic Development had its board meeting. Interesting thing about, that I learned in that meeting, there's a lot of site selectors, a lot of businesses that are looking for land, and they're looking where in the region to put that, and historically, Sarpy County's missed out on a lot of opportunities, because we did not have large available industrial manufacturing space, so if somebody needed large industrial manufacturing, they had to build a space, and we had land that we would put into the proposals, but they didn't have time to build. They needed to occupy something right away, and with low vacancy, we've missed opportunities. With R&R Commerce Park, that has changed the game. R&R now builds a building speculatively, so we have built-in vacancy, and at the last EDC meeting, there were a number of proposals that they had responded to with R&R's building, so that's gonna speed up, I think, some of the activity we see with economic development. Had, we've actually had a couple of ribbon cuttings during COVID. Ruded Soul in Shadow Lake is a little women's boutique. They opened up and had their ribbon cutting, and then Sarpy Chamber had an economic outlook meeting today, where each of the mayors gave a presentation on economic development and what's the impact of COVID, and then one of the state senators gave an update as well, and then I think that's most of the items. A reminder, the cleanup days is October 19th to 25th, so that's coming up. You probably will get questions on this and may even get some complaints. With most cleanup days, our staff goes way above board and helps people, unloading even, and helping them out in the cleanup. Because of COVID, we're not gonna do that, so when people show up, they've gotta unload their own, so just be prepared for that question. It's, it's directly related to COVID. Again, the comp plan review is October 26th. Please attend that if you can, and then watch your, watch your email. In the next week, you'll probably get a request for the meeting on the housing type discussion, and again, we want full council participation on that, so if you can help out there. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, just one thought with you bringing up about the cleanup, and one of the things that I've noticed as a user of the cleanup days is that there's certain times of the day where traffic will back up going westbound, almost all the way to the intersection, because there's vehicles coming eastbound, and just a thought relative to whether during those peak periods, if, if the eastbound traffic, if that street could be closed, obviously, they have another route to go, which is continue down Giles Road down to 96, if that maybe is a thought to really kind of help alleviate some of that congestion that exists.
Mr. Evans, can you take that comment back and, as a suggestion? Appreciate that. Not a promise you have to do anything, but look into it. Appreciate it. Mr. Ingberg.
We, I don't recall if we've mentioned this before, and even if we have, just a reminder, and I'll let you or the attorney tell me if I'm wrong about this. I think, as you mentioned COVID, we get occasionally, the council gets questions about masks and mandatory wear of masks. The way I've explained it to, to folks is, the City of Omaha and the City of Lake are a different status of cities. We're a first-class city. They have the ability legally to decide whether masks are mandatory or not. As a first-class city, we do not. We don't make that decision. It has to come either from the governor, or it has to come from the director of the Sarpy-Cass County Health Department. So, if you happen to get asked a question about whether we're gonna go to mandatory masks or not, I thought you, we should remind people, in case they watch this, that it's not really up to the city. We have no legal authority to do it either way. It has to come from those other two offices.
And that's a good reminder, because City of Omaha did pass the mandate extension today, and I, I've already received one of those questions of what, what we're gonna do, so I appreciate that reminder. Mr. Stube? Any other council comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Eighteen, zero, nays.
Motion passes, and a reminder, the four council members that we didn't meet with before the meeting, we got just a real quick, brief meeting in the conference room.